Are you gonna do it?
Got it.
All right, I have to remember how to do this. I'm calling this planning commission meeting into order. On this day, May seventh at seven oh two, we'll do roll call. Allison Miller.
James Whitesides.
Elizabeth Saul.
Colin Forsay.
Sure is.
That's everyone.
And are we going off of the April agenda since that meeting was?
It kind of is April agenda, but we have B H C consultants here. They're gonna start the meeting with us to kind of share where they're at in the process with our comprehensive plan update and they're here to answer any questions you might have.
You still need to do the minutes?
We do. We need to approve the minutes from March to April.
Hey, everyone review the minutes.
The minutes from April was very intense.
March.
Oh, yes.
March.
Yeah.
April was just like, we didn't have a meeting.
Yeah.
We just had.
It's all coming together.
Uh.
March.
Oh, the minutes? Are there even minutes for?
We did do minute.
No, because there wasn't.
There was no.
They say we opened the meeting and we closed the meeting due to no. So there's not really anything really much to approve there. I just included them as a.
We could agree that there's, there was no.
There was no meeting.
Thank God that was something.
Oh, you didn't? I think they went to all your City of Leavenworth. Yes, I was out.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yep, that explains.
So the only difference from the last meeting though, because we didn't have a meeting is we added B H C. They're gonna be on our first presenters after the minutes. Minutes are the same as what went out with your last packet. Um, I have extra packets here that I printed in case you didn't have. And they are on the website as well. But so we're gonna start with approval of the minutes from March and April.
Okay.
The presentation on the comprehensive plan from B H C consulting. And then we'll go into A D U's and then off street parking as time allows.
Somebody wanna?
Yeah, I moved to approve the planning commission minutes from March fifth and April second, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great.
I feel like those of us from the Zoom era still raise our hands. Other people say.
All right.
Yeah.
So moving on, we're gonna have the presentation from Katie and Eli.
Drew, Drew just joined us.
Oh, Drew just began it.
Okay.
Hi, Drew. Add you to the roll call.
There we go.
Just let me know when you're ready for me to start.
Yeah, I think Drew just joined us. Other pressure, so we're all good to go. Thank you, Katie.
Great, I'm gonna share my screen here. Um. All right, well, thank you so much for having us. I'm Katie Cody and I'm the planning manager with B H C. And I'm joined by Eli Mulberry, one of our planners. And um uh, we've been working on the housing and land use technical appendices um, for Leavenworth Comprehensive Plan Update for the past few months. And this is early work that represents the data analysis on um, land capacity and housing capacity that will form the policy underpinnings of uh the comprehensive plan chapters that we will be starting to work on in earnest um later in the year. So uh, what we've been up to the last few months is gathering um information from the county on growth populations and um, looking at Leavenworth's land and the zoning and capacity for growth. And so uh, the draft appendices that you have in your packets are a reflection of that work through probably about three weeks ago. So we've continued to refine that um, since we send you the, sent you the draft. And so we'll, we'll be presenting our most recent results in the presentation today and um hopefully after we present, we can have a discussion about um, some of our findings and some of the policy recommendations or questions that uh, we will get an opportunity to talk about more as the comp plan goes forward, but we wanted to introduce those tonight. So um briefly, an agenda for what we will be discussing. Um uh, Eli will go through the planned growth. Uh, so the, the population allocation that the county has given to Leavenworth for population and housing, and then how we've converted that into a jobs target. Uh, we'll talk about the land availability for jobs and housing and then uh, discuss some of the uh, influences that are impacting housing supply and affordability. And finally, a discussion about um housing policy in general. So I'm gonna hand it over to you, Eli, to go through the first part of our presentation. And maybe before I keep going, um, you can feel free to interrupt throughout the, you know, we'll have a time for discussion at the end, but if you wanna yell out any questions, we'll try and stop and, and happy to answer questions throughout.
Thank you, Katie. Um, so first things first, uh, so the, what the county does is they take their housing forecast from the state. And then they figure out uh, among all of the cities, uh, what the fair share of population growth will be. So for Leavenworth, that's four hundred and ten people. Um, and that's under their medium scenario. Uh, that's the adopted target. Um, and then, so if you move to the next slide, I think this is kind of where the meat of it comes into. So you have your four hundred and ten people that you're planning to uh, grow for um, over the next twenty years as part of your conference plan. In Shalun County, this translates into almost um, eleven thousand housing units and uh, just you know, three hundred and sixty-four housing units for Leavenworth. Um, and so the next slide. So the county didn't adopt a jobs target. Uh, but it is good to consider employment with, when you're considering forecasting as your conference plan. Um, you not only have to consider the people who are gonna be living there and moving there or um being born in Leavenworth and hopefully staying a long time. Um but also the jobs to accommodate those. So to get this number, since the county didn't give one, uh, we, we took about, I think, the, the ratio, uh, one, one point one seven jobs per household. And that is based on existing census. So converting the housing units to jobs. Uh, so um, the three hundred and sixty-four units growth, that would translate into about four hundred and twenty-two jobs for those community members. Um, so we took all of this.
Questions as we go, or should we wait?
You may ask the question.
Yeah, I had a question about the jobs number. Is that like F T E or is that like number, if I have like three different part-time jobs or all, are all of those different jobs?
That's a good question.
People.
One point one.
It's a lot of child labor, so.
No, it's four hundred and ten people. Three hundred and sixty-four houses, yes.
So that, that was looking specifically at the um, the how, the housing units um, to convert.
Those are just employed people from those housing units, not considering people coming in.
So yeah, there's a slide on that later. We'll, we'll show you. That's like an important, um, glad you brought that up now. It's a good preview for later. Um, Leavenworth does have a lot of jobs that uh, are accommodated by those who um, don't live in the city limits. Um, so yeah, I'll, I'll touch on that a little bit later too. Did, did that answer your question? I, I couldn't hear all of the chatter. I just wanna make sure before I moved on.
I think, I actually was not clear on the answer. So those are number, total number of jobs, but they, I, I think it, it sounded like they could just be part-time jobs.
They could be, yes. Yeah, they could. It was, it was just, it's based on a census number of um and it asked whether they're employed or not in those households and it just took an average.
Um, so it took an average of if the person was employed, not the number of jobs they had. Those are two different census inverse, but okay. So four hundred and twenty-two employed people.
So if, if you have this many households, but it looks at is, if you have this many, if you have three hundred and sixty-four households. Um, so we're, we're kind of making, uh, drawing a line between units and households here. Um, so it's a little bit of a step removed. Uh, and it's, again, this isn't a requirement from the county or this is just kind of good planning um, to make sure that you're having jobs available or planning for them. Um, so we took the three hundred and sixty-four units. Now we're considering the households and then multiplied um, that by one point one seven. So, yeah, um. How, the first question we ask on this is uh, what land is available for this growth? Um, to get a sense of this, we both look at zoning and um, the current uses of the land. Uh, so there are three categories vacant, um, underutil, vacant's pretty self-explanatory. Um, underutilized, so these are properties that um, have buildings that are usually worth less than the land it's on. Um, so you might have a large lot with a storage shed, for example, um, that might not be shown as vacant on the codes, but um, you, the, it's, it could be potentially converted into a, a different use later on. And then partially used, this is specifically to residential land capacity. So when we're thinking about this is, there's two categories. There's uh, residential and non-residential or commercial. Um, so partially utilized, we looked at this for residential. And the, it's, for that category, we asked the question, is the lot big enough to be split? So we looked at the minimum lot sizes under zoning. Um, so if it's two and a half times the minimum lot size, we were able to categorize it, categorize it that way. Um, and then the map shows an overview where these parcels are. And oh, and we excluded areas of um, steep slopes, uh, critical areas. Um, places that uh, are public uses and as well as, um, it's hard to show on this slide, but the, there are black dots showing uh, permit pipelines, so units that are currently in the permit process uh, in the, at the planning department. So those are excluded from this. And then you can advance it to the next slide. So for housing, um to go about this process, we ask what land is available. So those are three categories that we just went over. And then we asked the question, what could be built there? So, and this is based on the zone. Um, could you build a single family home? Could you build a duplex cottage, A D U's apartments? Uh, and so from that, we can get a density number on average um, based on uh, how many units you can anticipate converting that land into units. So this I want to be clear is that this shows what the land has available. Um, so whether or not, we'll talk about this a little bit later, but when you convert this land to units, um, we, you get a total of six hundred and fifty-five units. Um, this exceeds the, the target of three hundred and sixty-four units. And you can see it's broken up by zone here. So multifamily around two hundred and thirteen units, residential eight seventy-six. Uh, residential low, uh, three hundred and sixty-six. Um. And so what this is saying is that the land has available to accommodate, potentially accommodate those units in the future. Um, and so for commercial, it's a very similar equation. Except we, we're, we have a different, a little bit of a different conversion scenario. So you look at your vacant and underused land, um and you kind of ask what could be built there, how, how much commercial space could become available? And usually this is like a floor area ratio. And so from there, you can get your square footage of space. Um, and then, once you have square footage, uh, we assumed a, a more conservative estimate of a thousand square feet per employee on average. Um, and so um, given Leavenworth's uh, multiple commercial zones, uh there's plenty of, of job capacity. And I would do want to flag that this is slightly different than, this is different than what is in the, in the um, packet. This is a more correct uh, number of that initial draft. Um, so overall, two thousand jobs, uh, there's capa, land capacity for two thousand jobs, just over two thousand jobs. Um, and then the, the breakdown again is by zone. Uh, four hundred and fifty for light industrial, four eighty-two for tourist commercial. Um, central commercial, six forty-two, um, general commercial, six ninety. So, um thi- this kind of goes back into our initial, the conversation is, you know, Leavenworth doesn't just have jobs for those residents. And in fact, many current uh, community members uh, work elsewhere. So um, eight, this, what this graphic shows is that um, in twenty twenty-two, there was an estimated just over two thousand jobs in Leavenworth. Um, and two thousand of those were uh, employees who lived outside of the city limits. So um, thinking about Leavenworth as a place, uh, it's not just a place of its own um, re- residents and community members who live there, but also many employees who come in and um, work in the city. In addition, um, eight hundred and fifty-five uh, worked elsewhere but lived in the city. Um, and lastly on this, over half of Leavenworth, Leavenworth's workers lived more than ten miles away from the city. So the little uh, table in the right-hand corner shows um, the distances for, for each of those uh uh, workers. So thirty-nine percent live ten to twenty-five miles. Uh, that includes the areas of Kashmir and Guanachi. Um, not just those, they're just kind of example cities within those distances. Uh, twenty-five to fifty miles, this would be um in the range of Rock Island and then more than fifty miles, uh, Ellensburg or other places, sixteen percent workers. Um. So, um that was, that kind of encompasses what the land has available based on zoning and historic densities that have occurred. Um, and especially the housing unit growth. Uh, but we did want to point out that uh, we also calculated the units that have um, are in the permit pipeline already. So the red line shows the twenty forty-six housing unit target. And um, the, the deep maroon line shows uh, historic housing units that have been permitted over the years. So from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty, there were um, nearly three hundred units permitted. Uh, twenty to, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, there were ninety-three. And then um in the current permit pipeline, uh, there is three hundred and ninety-four units. So uh, that, what you already have in the permit pipeline already exceeds your, your unit target. And um, we wanted to discuss that not only uh, do you have your, your allocation, your ta- target um, in the pipeline already, but um it's, it's not likely that you'll just stop seeing permit growth after you hit your target. Like uh, the, the target is there for planning purposes, but um, there is uh, you, there's also a, a reason to plan beyond the target. So uh this projected permit projection, and this is a going onward from the permit projection is a rolling total. Um, so if the, this is based on an assumption that Leavenworth, if on average, you permit twelve uh, housing units per year from now until twenty forty-six. Uh, that would mean uh, six hundred and forty-six units from the twenty twenty-five. So, um again, this is just a forecast and that forecast is based on historic permitting data. And that was, is this actually a little bit more of a conservative estimate as well, um, because it did not include any multifamily units. Uh, we excluded those because those showed like a giant uptick one year and kind of threw off the averages. Uh, so we wanted to be a little bit more conservative with this. Um. So yeah, I think, I think what this chat says at the end of the day is, um, you have a lot of demand and capacity for these housing units. Um, but I think what we'll discuss next is uh, what Katie will talk about, um is whether it's the type of housing and accommodating your needs. But um I just wanna make sure there's no questions before we move on to that discussion.
In the, in this version that we printed, that graph is way different. Is that because the version that he's presenting has been updated in the last three weeks?
Oh. This was like a draft and it may have been, this is the most updated one that he shared.
Yes.
Did you want to discuss the difference between the, the two?
Uh.
Page was that on?
Yeah, that's um, very early in the package. It's like page four.
On the.
There's a few different.
That's.
Change that like.
Historic. Growth.
At the bottom, where is it? Like where it says comprehensive plan draft, what?
Page four. That, this is.
Yeah, so.
And it has like projected linear growth versus units and permit pipeline. And this shows us hitting the chart, not like wild.
So this, um, this is a distinction between actual supply and permitted supply. Um, and they're, they're kind of visualized differently here. Uh, so, um.
Like this.
Yeah, so what this is kind of saying, it's this graph here um, is not reflective of um Yeah, so this, this graph here kind of discusses um, more so spreading out those units to over the next several um, twenty years. I think this, this version, it kind of is a more accurate depiction of um what has been permitted um, already in addition to um, potential future growth.
The one in your presentation is more accurate?
I think, I think, uh, yes, ultimately, um what we're saying is what you have in the permit pipeline today already meets your, your allocated threshold. Um.
This is the permit pipeline, not the actual units. So.
It's also.
So that, the one and four, that's a good distinction. It also includes your supply.
Mine, this is for when, this is when they're submitted into the pipeline, like for example, the, the bigger permit complex has been in the permit pipeline forever. But nobody's living there.
Yeah. Drew, Drew has a question.
Yeah, thank you. Um, curious, you know, uh, was the amount of people that are working in the city but don't have housing within the city or driving, committing to the city? Uh, was any of that taken into consideration for the targets or it would be possible to overlay that? To me, I'd seen forty, fifty percent of the, the workforce not living in the community
Yeah.
is an issue that should be addressed in this as well. So I'm curious if, if that was taken into account. If not, could, could you overlay that in some way?
So, um, I think, you, are you talking about the, the employment target specifically?
No, more specifically that the housing opportunity
Right.
target and, and, and accounting for the need for more workforce housing within
Yeah.
within city limits.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. And I think it goes back to the way these targets are set. And largely, they are set by the county with a methodology from the state. However, those targets, there's the, the, the target that you're required to accommodate, which is that um uh, three hundred and some units. But then there's the, your own internal projection and planning that you could do because, like you mentioned, that you might see uh, more demand than what you're allocated for workforce housing. If that's a specific target that you would want to prioritize. Um, that's definitely something we can include as part of the comprehensive plan update. Um, but as far as the, the, how the targets are set, a lot of those are set by the county um, themselves. So there, there, there's what you're required as, to accommodate as a target. But you could also set your own internal target as well. If you want to set something that would be more representative to what you want to plan for.
I mean, yeah, I think that going back to your slide, uh, that says like, so there's not a housing shortage. I would just disagree with the sort of premise that there's not a housing shortage based on our net migration. Okay, yeah. Good point.
Yeah.
Can you go back to the slide?
Statements of the report are pretty.
Percentages of people, like employees in town that live in different places.
You can actually get it on the load study. You can actually find it. There's about twelve percent that live in Guanachi, thirteen percent that live in Leavenworth.
So forty-two percent of workers in Leavenworth. Yeah.
Live ten miles.
Within ten miles radius.
Um, there's no numbers assigned to like the number of like, what is forty-two percent? Like is, so.
Of two thousand.
Or, you know, what is?
Forty-two percent.
Eighty-eight percent.
They're using.
Four hundred and forty.
How many of those people, is it logical for us to try and accommodate? Because I think most of, like, there's a significant number that would live here if that was an option.
Available to them, yeah.
And so is that accounted for?
No. So we'll talk about that if we, if we keep going. That's exactly what we want to talk about. Basically. The distinction between what we're required to do and what we want to do. And I think that what you've demonstrated in the report and the presentation is that based on permitted uh, permits in the pipeline, projected permits in the pipeline too, we are projected to do what we're required to do.
Meet the county's allocation.
Right, which meet the county's allocation, but that might not be a reasonable assumption for what we want to do as a city, which might be to be able to house the people work, who work here, at least more easily than we currently do. Right, so the point, that's exactly the point we're trying to make is that on, you know, it's a numbers game when you're talking about complying with the G M A. So the the county hands down the population that Leavenworth must plan for and based on our analysis, we're showing that there's enough land. Um, it's zoned the right way and there's even permits in the pipeline to meet that growth. So technically, you could stop there. Uh, but we know that that's not really what's going to work for Leavenworth. Um, there's a lot of factors that are involved in the housing market. There's the employment atmosphere. There's the impacts of tourism and supply being taken for um, short-term rentals and second homes. Um, Leavenworth has challenging topography and natural features that make some areas more difficult to develop. And then, um, even though there is land available, the development community may or may not be building the types of housing that would be affordable or appropriate for the people who are looking for them. So we know from this conversation we've had tonight and also from the visioning events back in the fall, um that there's a strong demand for affordable housing options to accommodate residents that work in the community and live outside the community or those that, you know, want to move here for other reasons. Uh, and that the city, that the community want to look for visionary and innovative solutions to um, address affordable housing. So part of the, the um, part of the issue we're trying to address through these policy discussions are, it's not that there's not enough land, it's that there's opportunities that are not being met. So here's some examples. For example, um, if there's a vacant lot in the R L six zone today, the zoning allows duplexes or A D U's or other types of housing that would be uh, perhaps more affordable. But in reality, um, you're also allowed to build a single-family home and that's often what is happening. Um, or in the case where a, a single-family home and an A D U are built on that site. Um, the A D U may be a more affordable option, but if you're a family of four looking for a place to live, that may not fit your needs. So in the same way, in the multifamily zones, um, there is a program in place to require affordable housing if you use the multifamily tax exemption program and that's an opportunity. Require affordable housing if you use the multifamily tax exemption program, and that's an opportunity, but in reality. For example, the um current large project in the pipeline is not using the MFT program, so those units. Although they are apartments, may not be affordable units. So, part of what our job is now is to look at what the state is requiring. And what the local priorities are for Leavenworth, and then to bring those together into policies that go beyond. What the state's minimum requirements are for planning for housing and um try to get at policies that will, will. Um, increase the likelihood that those opportunities for affordability will be taken by the development community. So, that's all we have to present, but we wanted to put up here, um, some food for thought. Uh, so when we're talking about affordable housing types, there's naturally affordable housing, which is. Mostly older homes, homes that maybe, um, you know, you don't have to build them, you can't build old houses, they're just there. And sometimes they're a little bit rundown and, or maybe just older and they cost less. Um, smaller units or attached units are often more affordable. Um, people sharing a home, um, or having co-living arrangements where they um. Share, share a kitchen uh and living space but have their own separate um sleeping areas. Um, those are types of housing that can just kind of exist in a community without a lot of extra incentives. Uh, and then there's other types of affordable housing that require uh outside incentives to make them affordable. And Leavenworth has several programs that are doing that, for example, the multifamily tax exemption units. Um, units that are built by affordable housing developers like Upper Valley Mend. Um, ADUs that are protected from short-term rentals, um, or that were built with pre-approved plans. Those are both incentivized by the city and, or the policies. Um, units that are built through the code flexibility program that Leavenworth has in its code or units that are built. Uh, with an affordable housing grant or loan, so these are all, those are examples of. Uh, policies that are in place now, and then, um. I would just, oh, kind of bring it back to the group to talk about which of these um policies might be working. If we wanted to talk about, you know, fine tuning any of the particular policies, or if we just wanna step back. And, you know, get back into the numbers, if we wanna try and shoot for um. A different number of affordable growth versus just, you know, a number of unit growth in general.
Pretty sure the only thing on that. Our current incentives that's working is income-controlled housing. And a lot of what we have done is attempting to. Make that easier for groups like men. Um, and. I am curious if anything else on there has been used in a significant way, I mean, the ADUs. We know that a few of them have been built with pre-approved plans, but again, that doesn't. Guarantee that it's gonna be a, that their rent is gonna be cheaper. It's just cheaper for the person to build, maybe. Yeah, scheming about her here.
The, I mean, the reality is that we're, we have an uncanny valley sort of right now for us, where like. We lose a lot of people in this town in terms of housing stability, um, because we're not, we don't build down. And the apartments will not be cheap enough for the majority of those people, um, so we're going to see a. Probably a shift of demographic where people will be moving into those apartments who are moving to this community to live here. Uh, but are not necessarily workforce, um, so. A mix of retirees and maybe a few workforce people, but honestly, the, the wage gap is still the biggest problem on affordability. We cannot solve that with city policy at the moment, that's a market economics problem.
I mean, income-controlled housing, that's.
That would be the only path, yeah.
That we can do.
That's the only path we can do.
The one thing, and that's why like cottage housing is great and duplexes, triplexes, like all these things, like those are. Things that men can take advantage of and like a housing authority, whatever, can take advantage of, affordability incentives. Um.
I guarantee the census didn't capture a lot of our. Uh, the, the census is moderately accurate, right, it's not, it's like an eightieth percentile accuracy. So it misses a lot of the fire people, it misses a lot of the seasonal, seasonal workers here, misses people who are. Part of the community that's somewhat itinerant that are kind of in that.
Yeah.
Outflow.
We have a lot of seasonal workers.
And we have a lot of people that disappear that aren't in the number, so our, our town population is not high, super accurate, we know that.
I also, I mean, I can. Think of it like surprisingly large number of people offhand who were renting in Leavenworth for a long time. And then they were like, I'm ready to buy a house, and they had to buy a house in Kashmir.
Yeah.
And they were, maybe they work in Wenatchee or Kashmir, but like they wanted to live in Leavenworth, but when it, when they were ready to buy, they, that wasn't an option in Leavenworth.
Yeah.
Um. So, and, and that's a. The home, home price versus median income problem, um. So, so yeah, I mean, I think income-controlled housing is. Is the biggest focus aside from, like, I mean, we, that's the thing, is we've done a lot of. Things over the last couple of years to. Give them, give groups like men more options to do that, but it still hasn't happened, so.
I mean, the home price versus median income, uh, analysis to me. Is a little bit of a measuring the people who are already uh fortunate enough to have found housing here, and. One thing that is evident from looking at the census data of our um household incomes. Is that our households in Leavenworth do not have a normal shaped distribution for income, they have a valley in the middle. And we have a lot on the very low income and a lot in the very high income and not a lot of people in the middle. And the people who are on that low side are serviced by a very small share of units where they can fit in and. The demand for those units, we know far exceeds what the supply is, and. People who aren't fortunate enough to get in those units or who are in the, the, where our median income is, I, I mean. The mortgage rates now compared to where, when this was happening, I mean, I think everything is far outside. The, the median income of affordability right now, of people who would want to buy houses here. Who are living here, who are part of this community, and so, and I struggle to figure out how to do this analysis of like. There's the, what we have to do, and I understand that's what your analysis was based on, but it'd be really. I feel like we need to figure out how to make these decisions for policy of what we want to do, based on what we. Want our community to be able to, to house and house comfortably, uh, without, without housing. Finance stress, and so I'm not exactly sure how to do that, because it's hard to measure people who weren't here and who don't appear in the census. Um. But we can at least account for the fact that mortgage rates are, you know, seven, eight percent for a new mortgage now as opposed to three percent. When a lot of the people in the, who entered the census got their mortgages.
Yeah, and there's also like the. Mortgage owner housing costs as a percentage of income, it's like, yeah, again, this isn't taking into account the number of people. Who were entirely unable to. Purchase a home here.
It indicates a squeeze is what it, it's actually telling us is that people in the middle income bracket, fifty thousand to a hundred thousand were squeezed out of our market.
Yeah.
That's what it tells you, because it tells you that richer people were able to come in and afford houses here.
Right.
They're making more money, so I think that we, from a policy perspective, though, like as a planning commission.
Missing middle.
But how do we begin to even write code that can influence? Income-controlled housing, that's a council decision, right?
And it's not just income-controlled housing, because it's also that missing middle housing, it's also people who.
That, that's market economics, though, like, but it's not mission code.
Okay, fair enough.
That's where we get into the, how do we, what is, what is the control switch we have? So as we're looking at this.
I mean, we are doing a, at some point, getting a study done. So that we can talk about, um, thing. Inclusionary zoning, um, like that's. That's super important, I mean, that, I, to me, in a way, it's kind of like. One of very few remaining things we can actually.
Codify to change.
Codify, that, that will have.
But that's.
A real impact.
And, but the result of that is more income-controlled housing, right, I mean. That doesn't expand this list or.
Yeah. Um. Well. Part of. What else we can, what are other options now, right?
There we go, okay, what else can we do?
Do you have more uh things, I mean, this is, you were saying this is the incentives we already have, and I was saying income-controlled housing is kind of the only one that's.
Functional, yeah.
Getting us anywhere, although it's still not because it hasn't happened, but, um, because we don't have.
It's co-living, yeah.
Yet.
Yeah, I think that co-living is something that's newer in the state at least, um, and. It's a possible, it's another way to offer affordability through smaller units, it, it's not, it could be. Um, offered as a housing type and required to be affordable, um, as an incentive, but. Essentially, a co, co-living housing, um, requires. Sleeping and bathroom to be a, a unit that has sleeping and bathroom facilities, it's lockable. And then shared, um, living or mostly kitchen facilities, and so, um. The state requires co-living to be allowed wherever six or more multifamily units are allowed. So it would be allowed in multifamily zones, um, and the city could choose to allow it in other zones as well, so. If you, you know, if you picture the college house where you rent it to six people and they all have their bedroom and they share a kitchen. That's a, you know, a very kind of old-fashioned version of it, but it's essentially the same thing, but the units can be made, um, to be larger and more comfortable. Um, or you could convert an existing building into one, so it's a way to get, um. To make, to make some of these more informal house-sharing arrangements more formalized. Uh, and offer smaller units, it's not really a solution for families, um. I guess it could be for, you know, a small two-person family, though. Uh, so that's, that's a code change that we would probably be making anyway, and to be consistent with state law as the comp. As part of comp plan implementation, um, but, you know, I think that. The, that the city has done a lot, um, with trying to increase middle housing and ADUs and, and really work on the supply side. Um, but you're right, the, the, you know, the demand side is really controlled by the market and, um, developers will charge. What they can charge in order, you know, they, they will charge what the market will bear, so, um. Any type of uh housing that can be, that can be removed from the open market, um, another option, I think. Maggie and I discussed is the community land trust model, where either, um. A group like Upper Valley Mend or even the city, a, a nonprofit entity owns the land. And then the houses that are built on the, on the land are sold, um, to income-qualified buyers. And it's sold at a reduced rate because you're not having to include the price of the land in the sale. So that's another model that isn't really controlled by zoning, I mean, it could just be a. A regular single-family home or a duplex or even an apartment or townhouse development, um, but the, the. The person or the entity that holds the land through the community land trust is usually a, a nonprofit or private entity. Um. I think that any, uh, you know, more research could be done to this probably, but. Any policies that could try and uh control the use of housing for second homes or. Short-term rentals, um, I know you already do control that somewhat, but, um, those also take. Houses off the market for the year-round population.
If you help me understand the, uh, I see you guys published a thirteen percent vacancy number. In here and like, I just wanna understand where that fits in the, uh, kind of context. I don't remember which, maybe that's all.
I think it's fifteen.
Fifteen?
No, I think fif, it's fifteen percent vacancy versus Wenatchee is three percent.
Or.
Well, that's what I got from the census.
That census, in here, they published a number. Uh, fifteen point three is Leavenworth, you're right, nineteen point two is Shland County, so fifteen point three in Leavenworth, like. Uh, where does that fit in the, especially if we're going down the road of starting to try and force vacant properties to be converted or. Enter the market, I know of three in my neighborhood, for example, that are. Nobody lives in the right.
Shland County is high, I just wanna reference, I looked this up for other entities, and like Wenatchee is three percent vacancy rate, so.
So based on, but based on our like rural city context, like where does that fit, is that a pretty typical number? Or could you tell us that eventually?
Yes, um. I, I can't tell you like off the top of my head how that would compare to other counties or other rules, like jurisdictions, um. Without looking into a little bit more, uh, but, well, I will say to your other point on this is how do you. When you're thinking about converting vacant lands, um, and, and as part of our land capacity analysis, we do deduct. Uh, the vacant area, so, um, in the analysis, we, we are, we only took, I think it was eighty, it's the fifteen percent. We say we multiplied point eight five by the land available to account for the um vacancy rate. Um, as part of the analysis.
And vacancy.
No, no.
This is like.
These are vacant homes.
They can see.
Oh, vacant homes.
Housing units.
Reverse twelve percent.
Yeah, so we're just, we just have this kind of like, we have a lot of units that are empty. Um, because people are holding on to them for the perfect moment or who knows what reason, but incentivizing that, I don't know, is there any? History anywhere in the state or anywhere?
I've. I've heard of something, uh, Vancouver, B C has a program with vacant homes where. Um, I believe they're taxed at a higher rate, and I, I don't think they can, I think the way that they do it isn't. Allowed in Washington State, it's something we can definitely look into more, I've also heard of some programs where.
Sounds like a crown law, yeah.
Yeah, you, you can, um, look at utility rates to, to get a sense of whether or not a home is being used. Um, and using those rates, you know, assess some fine or fee, again, I, I don't know. If this is legal, we'd have to do some more research, but I, I know, I know a lot of communities, um, are also struggling with this. Same thing that homes are purchased and held vacant forever and ever, um. And in the meantime, the house, you know, the community needs housing, so that's something we can look into more.
We have a, we have a transitioning population in Leavenworth too, where we have an aging local population who have been here for a long time. And as generational transfer is happening, those homes are not hitting the market in a very consistent manner. So they come, they're held by families for emotional reasons, I can get, only guess. Um, but we have several of those that I know of in town, and it's, I wouldn't wanna tax them, that's an extra burden on them, but it's definitely like a. An engagement pattern that I'd love exploration on as part of the comp plan to say, to reduce the vacancy number, I think that's a.
Yeah.
That's cool for us.
Yeah, that's definitely a good, a good point to look into more and explore further as we, as we go.
So Amanda has a question? Go ahead, Amanda.
Go ahead, Amanda.
Okay, cool, now, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yep.
Cool, um, two points. Um on the peninsula, so Island County and those counties over there. Have very similar issues in that they attract a lot of uh. Folks who vacation on weekends or during summers, so they have a lot of housing that is second and third. Um housing, um owners who who own multiple housing, so. Maybe something to look over there to see what Island and some of the other counties are are trying to do to. Um tackle this issue, um and um. Then another point, um it, when talking about generational transition. I do know of um one young man, um his mother had passed away. He lived in the house for quite a while, actually, but unfortunately, he couldn't afford to keep it up. And so uh he is now renting it out, uh and you know that. He, it it brings money in for him, but it also provides housing for another family. Um and you know, if that's something that. We should also keep an eye on.
That's a great point, rent incentivization, if you have a vacant property.
Did I do something? I lowered her hand. Okay. Is that it, Amanda?
Yep.
Thank you.
It could be interesting to explore ways the city could help um. With either property management or or matchmaking with people looking for housing and people with a vacant house that they want. To put into the rental market, um and helping, you know, maybe. Through information or other resources to help understand how you do that, what you need to do to get your house on the market for rental.
There you go. Any more questions or?
Care emergent in ten person.
There's what uh, there's more ideas. Or if that's later.
Okay, so we um. We will uh continue working on these appendices and uh incorporating. Our updated research and any comments that. You want to provide, the planning commission or other stakeholders want to provide to us in the next couple of weeks. Uh and we will put that into a final version, um and I don't know if if the planning commission. Is uh is approving the draft tonight or the final version, I'm not sure what that process is, but when the final version is ready to take to council. We will be doing that, um and this work is planned to end next month. And then we'll continue uh incorporating that into the twenty twenty six, not twenty thousand twenty six. Conference of plan update. So that's all we have.
Uh BJ had a question.
Yeah, would if the. Counselor or the commission gave you a work, because they're not that specifically said workforce housing, because they're not a definition for it. But kind of what Elizabeth was talking about, if they said, hey, workforce housing is eighty percent AMI at rent and. At the purchase and have to fit our our. Units per uh people per unit, which is two point oh eight right now. And that, so how many of those of that new pop- new population growth is going to be? That type of work, because that could be workforce that we have right now. If they gave that definition, could you then reject that? And say, hey, this is what the natural growth is going to be and we're going to hit everything, but if we said you intentionally had. Things planned and this is what we're to work for and make that your for goal workforce housing. So they know they have a target, would you be able to provide that?
Well, we actually do have the, the way that the county assigns growth to the city, they do uh break it into income bands. So we have a planned for growth based on income band.
You gave them everything they need for the, everything, all enough you need to do what the job of the state and the county needs. But if they decide, hey, if the commission. Decided, hey, we want to fix the workforce housing and but you can't just go out and define what workforce housing is. The commission does it for you, says this is what we want you to look at, and this is the definition of workforce housing. So we have something to always work from, because everyone talks about affordable, but we're talking about workforce that's already working here that would move here.
Well, it still kind of comes back to like. Percentage like. Percentage of AMI.
That's eighty percent or under AMI and you and then they use that as, that's the definition that.
There's an allocation, there's an allocation ratio assumption in the all of these numbers.
Yeah.
Because we're at twelve percent of our workforce working in the city, when actually it's at. What they say, when that, because it's using LEHDS.
Yeah.
And they're at a lot, I mean, they need compared to even the state of Washington. So if we wanted to, hey, if we want to grow that to fifteen percent. What does that not saying it happened, but what would that be? What population do we have that have coming in? And it's.
Right, to say.
Hey, we need to have fifty units that are this type, and then now you can divide, then you guys would come up with policy with housing and council. Okay, what kind of policies can come up just?
Yeah.
For those ones.
Like if we can, if we can change our goal on, like, what number of units do we actually want?
Yeah.
Based on.
And that can be part of their projection.
A larger number of.
Because it's saying that we have, we have a passive, we actually are going to be at the units that we need to be there, they're saying. But what you.
It's not accounting.
Okay, we want people that are working here with the, anyone in the city saying, people that work here, we want them to live here. But it can't be just the one venue, we know that, okay, how do we target for that? And it's not going to be huge, but how do we move from twelve percent to fifteen percent people don't have to commute here? Have have their families here and grow our economic schools.
I mean, pages fourteen and fifteen of the presentation for me are like the damning evidence about like.
Yeah.
It's essentially saying that we have very little, very few things dedicated. Up to eighty percent of the income AMI.
So then we can look at what we can.
But also on page eleven. Of our presentation, it says housing need allocations by income level and type, and that, those numbers that says. Permanent housing needs by income level.
Yeah.
They have that of.
Is the number, like the biggest number on there is for greater than a hundred and twenty percent AMI, like that's.
That doesn't make sense.
That doesn't make any sense, that's only because that's the only people. Right now.
Yeah.
Yep.
Like that is the only reason that says that, that's not what we need, it's what we already, it's just saying, let's have more of what we already have.
It's not what we should plan for.
And it's not, we, we don't need more of that. The lower range.
Fifty to eighty would be the sweet.
So just find a better way to show you what should I target.
I mean, even up to one twenty, like it says only twenty. Twenty nine and the eighty to a hundred and twenty seven to a hundred to one twenty, and those are the lowest numbers, and I'm like, no, those should be like. The biggest numbers, those are people who are making eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. That I, I'm pretty sure that correlates strongly with people who are like, I'm ready to buy a house and I like want to own a house and live here. And and that's the lowest number of allocated housing units, because currently, that's the group of people who is least able to afford living here. Because they don't qualify for affordable housing, but they also, and well, that's super limited anyway, that's another story, but, you know.
These are, these are the allocation targets from the county though, but, yeah.
Which is the.
But we need.
Yeah, so we need to.
Because it's more, because we have our senior housing, which is great, but we need those, we gotta end up meeting these targets. Just with our natural growth, but that also eighty to fifty, that's why I say that we define workforce, because. We have an amazing senior community here and we have those opportunities. But workforce, you don't have a lot of areas.
So can we, I mean. Uh to what extent with, like, in following the GMA and what is like. Written into our comp plan, can we deviate from these? Numbers and say like, no, based on. The employment numbers and blah blah blah, like all the things that we just. Know to be true based on the other evidence, like our targets are different.
You can choose higher targets, so you can't. Without working with the county, you can't plan for fewer units than they've allocated to you. But you can choose to plan for more units and you could plan, say, all of those units would go into, you know, a certain income band. Uh and if you did that, then we would, we would um. Run the analysis, planning for, you know, more units that are affordable to. Forty to sixty thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollar AMI uh per year. Um the the trick is, so this, the, this graph is showing. The housing target, so with the county allocated and the capacity pipeline, and it's showing so much capacity, but as we talked about. Just because you have the land to build something, it doesn't guarantee it's going to be affordable, so. Um I think even if the city wanted to say we're planning for more middle income residents. It still wouldn't change the capacity available, um unless you wanted to. Um increase that capacity even more by allowing, you know, higher density development in more places. And that's just providing more supply with the idea that eventually, if there's enough supply, then the prices will go down.
I. I feel like that's kind of an endless. Without policy to make sure that the the supply goes to the right people, we're gonna, you're never gonna. Satiate the supply, so I think that we need to be more cognizant. We don't want people just buying up cheap condos that they can, you know, vacation at on the weekends.
Also, like with the Leavenworth house, the apartments behind St. Way, it was like, oh, this is going to be our. Saving grace of workforce housing, and then the developer was like, actually, I can charge way more money if I put in granite countertops. And and so it's like a studio is two thousand a month, like it's totally ridiculous.
Mostly nursing stuff.
Yeah, I mean, it's nothing like.
Or outflow problem.
There's, yeah, I mean, that was just like a developer being like, come and I extract more money, and that's what developers do.
It's their job.
That's their job.
Yeah.
But like they're, they're going to keep doing that, they're gonna put in the granite countertops so they can charge more money for an apartment that would have. Cost half as much, they made some different choices, but. Uh so yeah, I mean, you have to, that's, that's why inclusionary zoning exists, is because you have to make. Rules or developers will just be like, the, I can get more money if I build a luxury unit. So.
Katie, can you help me understand this part a little bit? I just want to make sure I'm reading it right, what is the blue, the blue indicates?
The blue is the number of units Shalane County has given to Leavenworth. By income band, so we switched this into real numbers rather than the. The percentage of AMI, but this is the same graphic that's in your packet.
Right.
Basically saying, you know, you need uh seventy five um. Units that are affordable to zero to twenty three and the capacity that we calculated. Was twelve more than that, so the numbers show the um capacity above, it shows the surplus.
Okay. Okay, so the black box is the potential and the blue is the targeted number, okay?
So in some communities, we see the opposite, we see a lot of demand for, or a lot of um target. Allocated and they have no capacity, and so in those communities, we have to talk about things like, well, whether you need to do, change your zoning code. To allow more density or um allow different housing types, but we don't have that situation here.
Does that capacity includes vacant or underdeveloped land?
It does, yeah. And it also includes the pipeline units.
Hundred sixty five people commuting for Blackwater. But not all the nurses, because they're not resident.
Any more questions? Or comments?
Lots of numbers, thank you for.
Yeah.
The packet, it's a lot to consume.
Yeah, it's a lot to consume, yeah.
Sharon?
Last good question, uh as a uh. Property owner, or office owner, and not a city council person.
Yes, you can do that as a, a, a.
Some of this sounds like my rights would be taken away.
In what way?
Well, if I, if I had a house, um if I wanted to sell my house. Can I sell it for what I want to, or do I have to follow some kind of rules that?
No.
No, you can sell it for whatever you want.
Okay, so that it it just felt like I'm taking, oh my god, I'm taking my rights away.
No. Any, anything that we. Do relating. To inclusionary zoning that would mandate affordability would be related to. New construction, or it could be something that. Current owners might be able to opt into, but it would not be something, there's no way that any inclusionary zoning. Could be mandated for people who already own a home.
Okay, and um there we, is this, it didn't sound like we have the property, but. The demo problem they're talking about, and is this including the urban growth area or just the city limits?
It does include the UGA.
If, okay, that that makes more sense.
Yeah.
And do you, we can, we could do that in new ways without um the counties. So is the county giving us permission to do that?
Well, the county would have to adopt anything that we.
Any code.
Any, any code that we, that the city adopts, the county then has to choose to adopt it for it to apply in the UGA. So even, so that's like right now, their county is not letting people build ADUs in the UGA. Because they're saying that. Because of weird code stuff, that like they chose to adopt something that conflicts and whatever, so, so that um. Yeah, the county, the county would, they're supposed to adopt the code after the city does. That's their own process.
Celeste has raised her hand.
But we don't know if they are, if they would.
They're required to.
They're required to, so there'd probably be a lawsuit if they didn't, they like to not do things and then get sued over it.
And the people up there, they would be concerned too, should, do they know this is going on?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it, it, the, the effect is similar to you, that like nothing is.
Nothing changes.
Required or nothing is required or forced upon people who already. Own their property or own their home, like they're not required to make any changes, do anything differently. This is for new, new development. I mean, there's vacant land, same as there is in the city, that would be affected potentially.
And under, and underutilized property up there where there's a, there's an R ten. Two and a half acre lot that has a tiny house on the back corner or a tiny house in the front corner or a house right in the middle.
But still, none of these rules would, would require that those large properties in the UGA that have one house. It would not force them to subdivide their property, it says they now, they could have the option to subdivide. They could have the option to develop it differently, but they're not required.
Okay, nice, yeah.
Celeste would like to make a comment. Go ahead, Celeste.
Hey, um thanks, I really wanted to be there in person, but um I wasn't feeling well uh today, so. I did, I'm just zooming in instead, but um thank you, Katie and Eli for that presentation, it was great, and um. I think I did want to caution, it sounded like you. And um, I think I did wanna caution, it sounded like you as a, as a planning commission were thinking about like changing the allocation numbers and um I, I, I would caution you against doing that because the county could take that as, they could take that the wrong way. And if, you know, if you want to get stuff done in the UGA, you really need to work with the county. And um, those numbers were given to us. I know that it was kind of controversial um with the state and it is I, I just, I feel like I would be careful going down that road. Um, and also to Sharon's point, we do have to be careful about um, property rights. Like, we don't wanna scare people, you know, and make people think, oh my gosh, are they gonna require that we that we have to build two ADUs on every lot. And I think it's important that we somehow say, no, this is just an option. And we're not gonna force people to do anything because that can um, that could certainly make a lot of people upset. And I think we need to make sure and and frame it in the right way so that people see that we're trying to help the town and make it better and um, a better place to live. So, that's what I wanted to say.
I would argue with that a little bit because A ADUs have always been allowed in the whole county, like the county allows ADUs. You don't even have to be in the UGA. And not a lot of houses have them. And in the city, not a lot of houses have them. I think that is evidence that even if we allowed, you know, we're gonna allow a second ADU largely because it's state law and maybe because we want to. And that that doesn't require anything of anybody. It's just like, here's another option, just like the first ADU is an option that not very many people take advantage of. Um, and B, I don't think the county I think that ship has kind of sailed in terms of like trying to appease the county and like I'm not going to try and be antagonistic by any means, but I also don't want to avoid making changes that we think would, could make a huge difference for the city of Leavenworth because we're afraid to upset the county when the county has for their own mysterious reasons already chosen to not cooperate with us.
Thank you, though, Celeste, for saying like, yes, we do need to, the, the way we approach the language has, is very important.
Yeah.
And the misunderstandings of how code works and what code means, it, it's high, right? It's high among even educated people. So like even people who understand how the code should work, it's like, we can't, we can't force anything on anyone that would devalue their property. For your example, Sharon, like, we cannot do that by any means, but we need to provide the most number of opportunities for people to, to move forward. So we just, I think it's a language, it's how we present it too.
We have to continue, like, make sure that we're always presenting it as like
Opportunity.
This is an option, it is not a requirement. Um, or it is not, it is not mandated or forced upon
Mm-hmm.
Anyone. It is an option.
Drew, Drew, would like to say something?
Yeah, I just wanna uh, to, to Celeste, thank you for your comments there, um, and appreciate the perspective. Um, as, as far as I, you know, I think that the word you was manipulating the numbers, um, I don't think that would be our intent. Our intent would be to outline, here is the, the directive, here is, here is what the county has um, told us our goal is. And I, my, I guess my vision would be, we would then layer on top of that a secondary or tertiary goal of, you know, what are we doing on top of this to address workforce housing uh, and some of the other affordable housing needs. And so I think that would be more of a, a secondary, like I said, tertiary approach. Um, because th- those are, you know, really stated mission goals of, of the city. And we want, you know, make sure that we're addressing that in a comprehensive plan as well.
Thank you, Drew. That's a very good way to put it. That we're
Above and beyond.
We're, we're adding, we're kind of, yeah, we're going above and beyond. We're not trying to um, circumvent any of the county or state requirements by any means.
But will the county planning, will county planning be mad at us for saying you got the numbers wrong? Probably. So, yeah, I mean, we have to accept that risk.
You know, maybe, maybe messaging too. We don't say, these numbers are wrong. We say
Right.
The focus that we would like to put on this housing piece is
We wouldn't explicitly call them wrong, but they would, you would, that's us saying it wrong.
And I mean, that's the challenge with
Yeah.
The communication here is that I think Shalane County has a tendency to assume malintent, assume um, yeah, malicious reasoning when it's like, it's really definitely not. This is like, we're yeah, we want to go above and beyond.
Any other comments or suggestions?
One more. I think that's a big, workforce housing has always been, it was in twenty twenty-one, it's in, they're talking about it. They're, they can't, they're not going above and beyond. So if you say, hey, this is, yes, 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 that's what's gonna get us to this, like you said, this is what the number is. Counting, this is what the number is that we're gonna get based on everything we're looking. But if we, if we as a city want to address workforce housing, how, how many more additional is that gonna add on top? And that's if we do policies and we, because our community says, this is what we want. So we're looking, we're looking at the policies, because we, yeah, we're gonna do all the things uh, that's gonna relate and get us to that, and it's already on, it's something on that list that you guys don't have on your, uh, uh, on your calendar. That you're going to be addressing. And that's, I mean, you've been standing up on that this entire time. But it's not gonna be just you, it's also gonna be housing, it's gonna be council, it's gonna be, they're talking about it. How do we address the actual workforce housing, create policies around that? And then you do those in addition. Then what does county have to say? They go, what, you guys can't make policies? You hear what we're doing right here, and you're in, it's taking everything into consideration, but hey, we can find this additional, and how can we do that? Now the housing committee is able to say, hey, what are we doing with our money? How, these are the type of houses that we want. Yes, we're working with men, and they can go and push that. And so, because you guys are all on exactly the track, and it's not a lot of it, it's all, they've done exactly what you need. And so now it's okay. We have these numbers, what would we set as policy in our comprehensive plan? And that's what we want to say. Here's the city, or county, city, here's our department, community members, here's our, right, get fifteen, twenty, how many more does twenty add to that four and six number now then, and twenty four to six? What does that look like? That's what we're gonna try to do. So now we're accomplished, because we are, you are, and there's things in the thing that start checking it off. Hey, what are we doing? That's where you guys all, all are at. Everyone is right there right now. It's just, okay, let's not, we don't happen to accept that, that's what we're gonna get. That's a minimal. Here's what we're gonna do, policy, this community wants.
Anybody else? It's eight twenty. I hope I might not get too much.
Drew wants to do ADU.
Yeah, we wanna have that. We have our consultants on. Do we want? Katie or Eli, do you have anything to add?
What is our timeline? For their, or y- your timeline to Katie?
I can't tell if you're asking me or Maggie.
Um, well, I kind of realized I, I could ask either of you, or maybe I switched halfway through. Um, but in terms of us providing more feedback so that you can start to draft things, what is our timeframe?
We had talked about um, having a final version ready in the next few weeks. So if you, um, if you wanted to provide feedback, I'd say we'd love to have that in the next week or so, so we can incorporate that into the draft. Um, and then in terms of the scheduling for reviews, I would leave that to Maggie.
Including, and that feedback, that'd be like if we want to add to the housing targets here.
So I would say we don't have to, we don't have to figure everything out right now. Um, this is the uh, land capacity analysis that we did based on the county numbers, I think is you know, we have, had to do it and we've done it. And uh, as we go forward with the comp planning process and continue to get feedback and start researching some of these other concepts, we can return to that discussion of, of planning capacity and numbers and make adjustments at that time. Um, I don't think we have to get it all into this land, into these technical appendices.
Okay.
So I'd say if, if we wanna make sure that the analysis that we are doing right now is thorough and correct and that, you know, it's presented in an easy to understand way, and then we can include some policy recommendations or next steps that we wanna continue to to look at as we develop the housing element of the comp plan. So for sure, suggestions like, you know, we wanna look at um, what it would look like to add more planning for workforce housing into our numbers, and we can run some, um, you know, some scenarios with some different numbers involved. And, and I think we, we can do that after June, um, but we can I guess, put together our to-do list to have that in, in the appendices.
And I think I'm getting the sense that seeing some numbers that translate like the amount of yeah, if there's some evaluation of like the amount of people that are commuting to Leavenworth for more than ten miles to work and how much of that could potentially be translated to additional housing targets? Like what income level that would fall into?
Yeah, I mean, the
Targets, that would be kind of use numbers, but yeah, it seems like the rest of it is um, really good data to move for.
We could work on quantifying the number that, you know, matching up the number that's commuting in. Um, and what type of housing resources would, would be required to house them all? Um, my question is, are you, is your goal to have housing available for a hundred percent of the workforce commuting into town? Seventy-five percent, fifty percent, do you have a sense for, you wanna plan for everybody?
Oh, I think planning for everyone is highly unrealistic, but um, and unnecessary. But I guess I don't know how it compares to other communities, and that's why we're kind of asking you like
Mm-hmm.
What, what would make sense? Like, we know that there is a major discrepancy in the income people make by working in Leavenworth and the income you need to live in Leavenworth. So like, yeah, I don't know how much of that we can or should address, but I don't, maybe, I was, I was hoping that this data could help us find that out.
It's at twelve percent. Twelve percent of our workforce live in residence, and it's eighty-eight percent. So we want it to go to fifteen percent for twenty twenty-one. Uh, they looked at that, I mean, workforce housing. It's in there, and so it'd be about forty-one house, about forty-one. Be about forty-one residences would have.
Uh, yeah, I know.
So many numbers to
It's just, it's a lot of numbers. It's a lot of numbers.
It's kind of like arbitrary targets, it's gonna be hard to meet without significant things anyways, but I mean I, I just throwing out a number, it feels like, what would it take to get half of our workforce to be able to, to live here?
Yeah. Forty-two to fifty percent. Yeah.
Wow.
So looking at how, of um, housing capacity for fifty percent of commuters and assuming uh, middle income bracket, fifty to eighty percent? Or just distribute them across income bracket?
The lower middle.
Like a hundred percent below.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we also have, I mean, I think that there's the middle income, like the, the low middle income, the eighty percent, eh, like AMI.
Like mostly below.
Yeah, mostly below. Below median, but not.
Yeah. We'll work on something.
Yeah, sorry that we're asking for things, but being very vague about what we're asking for.
We'll just provide something and you can see if you like it.
I think, I think, I think it's really modest to be able to say like, hey, we're not asking for much, we're just land county residents, don't get here, we're just trying to figure out what would it take to house half of our workforce. I think that seems
Yeah, I think, and we were saying fifty percent of the workforce, not fifty percent of people currently commuting, or which do you mean?
Yeah, that's what I meant, the workforce, people working here.
Okay, I didn't understand that distinction. So not fifty percent, well, it's a, the numbers are similar, but not fifty percent of the two thousand and some coming in, fifty percent of the two thousand and something total.
Something higher, but if we're gonna
I think that would be a good guide on.
Yeah.
To see, yeah.
So, uh, as a planning commission, if um, Katie and her team get something to us in the next few weeks, would you, if I email it to you, would you want to look it over if it, we need to make some progress before our next? Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Homework.
Homework.
Question. Have we surveyed, or anybody surveyed the people that do commute? Whether they actually want to live in Leavenworth, or they're finding, living in Wanta Chee, getting free ride up on the bus and back.
And that's hard.
I think, I think they tried to do that before, and they surveyed the employers, not the employees, so it was pointless. Honestly.
We, we don't have a great answer there.
So, yeah.
That's a good question, though. I mean, I think it
Yeah, I would love to see a survey like that.
I know anecdotally, plenty of people have not been able to find housing, and if you look on the left-hand side, housing page.
Yeah.
Housing wanted page, there's no shortage of people, hopefully every week, because I need to find housing, I work here, blah, 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 that would be forced to move to Kastner. So, I mean, anecdotally, there's
Mostly anecdotes.
Streams of data, but
Are these people that live in Wanta Chee or either just people like, God knows where they come from?
No, so like
No, people who live here, who are getting cooked out.
I'm losing my neighbor to cross the street for the people that own their house, are moving back to town, and they're being, or they're going to the Roseland.
Although they were, they were um, renting.
They're renting, but there are a lot of people looking at that transition. So we have people of a thirty to forty-year-old age bracket that are have lived in town for quite a long time, up to ten years, especially forest service people renting. Been living in town for a long time, for people who work in kind of middle income jobs, that when they go to purchase, have nowhere to buy a house. Because they can't, they're in an eighty percent AMI rent window, so eighty percent income window, they can't afford a house.
Well, there's open up the job through the thirty.
Well, that's not
Yeah.
The question is like, now, then they would be So then they move down valley.
Yeah. Or
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is part of our two thousand community.
Yeah.
No, I, they have
So it's a sample size of one.
Yes, yes. And, and I won't tell you which bracket, because, but I, I'm, I'm, yeah. Public information. Right, right, you can look it up and see what box I mean. But yeah, if it was up to me, if I was, didn't have someone to live with, I would not be able to afford it. I, I would be able to afford a studio, but that's about it. I wouldn't be able to engage the community. I mean, yeah, you could also run the analysis of not even just workers in like the retail sector, if we like mounted up all the workers who worked in our education and civic sector, like how, like, and the income brackets that they're in, like what would it take to house them? That would be another place.
I mean, Kenny, when he was with it, with us numerous times said, I can't find teachers anymore. Like no one is applying for these jobs because they can't afford to live here. Like he said this repeatedly.
Yeah.
Yeah, same with the hospital that they're like
So we just add up the civic sector employment, I think that would be another number to peg on instead of 50%. That would be something like, can we, can we start with hospitals, teachers?
Why isn't it?
And including, yeah. Well, like what would it take to
Yeah.
House them?
Yeah.
At the income level comfortably?
Yeah.
Yeah. That we're paying them. For more than 200 square feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Another issue is, and I go also is, you know, I've heard stories of people applying for these jobs, they're looking at these jobs. Maybe they can't afford to live in Love and Worse, but they could get a job somewhere else and pay a lot less, but so they take them. So it's not just that they can't afford to live here, but the
It's the ratio.
Yeah, the ratio is such that like choose a different job. Different location.
And you're saying they choose jobs because they can't live here?
No.
Oh, because they also are that, is that they can't afford to, for the public sector guys here and they commute out so that they can afford to live here. There's plenty of those as well.
Whether they're ready for that stop to all this and sort of pregnant people from apartments that you prepare to be that stops, somebody that is living in that apartment because they want to be here, but they don't work here, they, you know, work somewhere else. If it works like, I don't know, anywhere.
Unless we created some, unless we created some sort of residency incentive, but those are, are too enforced. Okay. Notice the, the age, you know, depending on state, maybe down, kind of, you can pay a ton down there, it's like four, so here, so there, 100%. But after the years, there'd be more, it's not a, 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 a short thing.
We're, we're talking about, like, my husband commutes to Wenatchee.
Yeah.
Um.
You're the only one that technically works local.
Yeah. I mean, and I work all over flying, hopefully, but, and wherever, but, but yes, I have an office in Love and Worse.
My business address is where?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so.
How much do you business license?
Yeah, I mean, well, yeah, Penny.
It's a
Simon, Simon's business is here.
That's true.
It's a
Oh, my God. I don't, he works here.
That's from the chat.
50% of our population can be aged 25, 20%. And Wenatchee is at 15, state of Washington is at 13, so we don't have kids coming back and working with you. So, so they all started, we're at 9% and that hasn't moved any day. And so we don't have kids coming back to live here, this is not starting to advance. So Kenny, he's talking about, you know, how the students
The removal or it's
Yeah, and so, and it keeps on giving, well, that's important, so that's the how, that's how folks, how to find that. There is a rental comeback and looking for, there's probably this area that you have to bring it to. They don't get experience to, not bring it back here.
Yeah. We should move on. Yeah, I think, I think, yeah. Sorry, we just kept, we could go on and on for days. So I appreciate your patience.
Katie or Eli, do you have any follow-up questions or anything you need from us as homework? Uh, no, Maggie, it'd be helpful if the commissioners could send their comments to you and then you could batch them and send them to us. Do that. And I don't know, maybe by the end of next week, the 16th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Hey, thank you all. Great discussion.
Thank you so much.
All right. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Um, the next item that we had on the agenda was the ADUs and this was a carryover from last month. Um, we didn't get to meet. Um, I just had, I sent this over to Commerce for comments and so the draft you have in your packet includes their comments, so there's obviously some things. You know, I had written in here, things per our discussion. Just wanted to get some feedback for you and hopefully have like a final draft for next, to schedule a hearing either next month. Um, I feel like there's a lot of information here, it just needs to be cleaned up. Um, the biggest question I had was what you want to do for the lot coverage?
Can I get the topic presentation part time on the packet? Is the, are the green comments, the ones from Commerce?
Uh, yeah, there's, um, there's two different commenters at Commerce, the purple was Commerce and so was green, yeah. Sorry about that, it's kind of unclear, but the red was just my comments based on based on our discussion the last time. Um, but, so, so I just need to add, you know, there's, I added the state law, uh, the RCW in the packet. So there were a few areas where I, I made assumptions like, yeah, we don't have a height, our height limit is 30 feet and these zones were already meeting that. We don't have a limitation, but they suggested like specifying some of those, like making it very clear that the height limit is 30, it's not 20, it, uh, because the state law mandates that it, it has to be greater than or equal to 24 feet. Um, and then they talked about impact fees, can't be more than 50% of the principal unit, so just clarifying that here, so I don't have to change it in Title 14. Um, or in our, uh, elsewhere in our utility rate. So, so that would include like our hookup fees for water sewer. So if somebody built an ADU larger than 900, ah, 900 square feet, it would be codified here that we wouldn't, that they wouldn't have to pay more than 50% of that uh, for an ADU.
More than 50% of the standard hookup fees for a single family residence.
Or for four and eight, like, because now you have to, yeah, pay a second hookup fee if it's over 900 square feet. Um, so those would just be clarifying. Um, I added that section about, um, when you have two ADUs, if you propose two ADUs, a single family unit, uh, shall not require, shall require only one off-street parking space regardless of its square footage. That was, that way we don't have to update Title 14. Um, so it just is very clear that it's applicable to ADUs only. So then you don't have to have two spaces for the house plus the two for the two ADUs, it would be a total of three. And just correct me if I'm wrong, and I, I thought that was based on our last discussion that we kind of made that assumption. To just kind of give a, uh, just an extra benefit to adding a second ADU. Um, then we have the clarification for like the interior habitable area. Uh, we had a round and round conversation on what's included, what's excluded, so we were trying to just clarify how we regulate that. Let's see what else we have. Oh yeah, I had, for some reason I had existing legally established structures, but the statute language just says to allow ADUs, we converted from existing structures, it didn't say legally established.
Should established also be passed out for?
Yep. That's my bad. Once, once I read it through, once it's not redlined, it would have been like, huh, that doesn't make sense. So thanks for that catch. So just from existing structures. Um, let me see what else. I still looked at the major transit stop, even on the washstop map, and it didn't show major transit stop here, so I was confused with that comment.
You can just leave it in there.
Even like
In case there ever is one, so we'll just leave it.
We're compliant, we don't need to update it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I say it doesn't, yeah.
You just, it don't lie or it doesn't
Yep. So I had it in there just because the code is, it's required, so
Yeah.
If at such time we do have one, then it'll comply. And so really the last part though is kind of a work in progress, I had two different, uh, options. And I know Elizabeth, you were kind of looking into this and
I did.
It's, it's really hard to, uh, to map it all. Um, I haven't had a lot of time to dig into that, just with workloads that over the last couple of months. Um, I think whatever's easy, the easier of the two is probably number one.
Yeah.
I mean, this is talking about if it's a six, if the lot is less than 6,000 square feet, then we apply it this way, if a lot is 6,000 square feet or greater than we apply this other.
I I think I don't understand why we're not just saying
Go up by 5% for each ADU.
For each ADU, yeah.
That would make it, that would make it
Really see a problem with that regardless of lot size.
Because you're already having to comply with setbacks and things like that, right? So I, I agree, there's no reason to introduce a weird complex formula.
Yeah, we just went round and round talking about that, so I was trying to throw in everything we talked about.
Yeah.
And so it would be easier for staffs to not have to make all these weird calculations and just say, if you have one ADU, you can increase by 5%. If you have two ADUs, it goes to an additional 5%.
Yeah. Drew, do you have opinions about this? Because I feel like last time we talked, you had reasons for maybe supporting the like different ways of calculating.
Yeah, my, my only thought was a smaller lot, um, I'm sorry, yeah, a smaller lot that, that 5% really didn't factor to much space at all. Um, so I was maybe previously the, trying to sway it in the direction of maybe doing a minimum, minimum benefit, but I think that to, to Maggie's point, the enforcement would be too difficult, so it's probably cleaner to leave another percentage increase.
Okay, I'll come up with some language that's clear.
Oh.
A minimum benefit would be an interesting one. Like how would you, how would we couch that, Drew, like? You'd have to be, you'd have to have a lot size number in mind.
Yeah, I think that, that was a kind of the discussion point is if you'd identify a lot that, that, you know, what's something that's in the RL6 at the moment and um, is on the smaller side, what, what would it, you know? I, I, I think that when you were talking 5%, you're like, oh, that's an additional uh, 50 square feet, and that, that doesn't equate to anything, right? Uh, you can't really build that into, into any benefit, um, so I, but again, if this takes too much time, I don't want it to delay, uh, the progress of this uh, this initiative, so I'm happy, happy to bench that one if, if it's too complicated.
And there may just be some lots that it's not going to work on, right? That are just small, already have a life or home and
I think there's a rapid setbacks before leaving them, right? It's a lot coverage issues for the smaller lots.
Yeah, on a 3,000 square foot lot to fit a house, two ADUs and three parking spaces is probably just never going to be feasible. Unless one of the ADUs is 150 square feet, in which case that's 5% of the lot area, so you can, maybe it helps, you know? Um, but it's, you know, it, yeah. I think that uh, the calculation was just, I, I don't know that there's that much to be gained, even though it's not helping much for small lots. Small lots might just not get to take much advantage of this.
I can, I mean, and I did start some scenarios like with houses that are on some of these small, like on Park Avenue where there's some small ones and showing like, hey, this has one house, it does have room for an ADU, maybe not two, but um, it even, even for lots now, I mean, it's hard to fit some, just one ADU, so adding this 5% language would allow that. You know, so these lots that have an ADU now, maybe it would help pump them into that, oh, now I can fit an ADU on my property. Um, and, and vice, and along with the ones that have one, maybe this would help with two, maybe smaller units, which is what we're looking for, more affordable. Um, so I'll, I'll try to simplify the language and when I put together, when we get this ready for hearing, I'll have staff report and I'll try to have some like scenarios. I'm not great at visuals, I'll try my best. Um, I have some ideas of some, a few lots, like some real world scenarios and I could show like a picture of what it looks like visually. And then like a bird's eye view, like a site plan view of what that would look like to with additional coverage and some numbers. That might help people see the impact and how minimal that impact.
For those with a 5% differentiator, like show what you've built within the movement, you add that 5%, how much more reasonable.
And how much lot coverage that would be total for like a 3,000 square foot lot versus a 6,000 versus a 10,000. So would you guys be comfortable with, if I, uh, with scheduling a hearing with those fixes? Yeah, just to get it moving?
Yes.
Uh, would you be comfortable with like a next month hearing? So I'd have to get that scheduled um, and sent out soon.
Yeah, I'd like to get this on the next month's.
Okay, I feel like we've had a lot of conversations about this, we had multiple, you know, round and round conversations and it would be good to at least try to move this one forward. Um, so with your blessing, I'll try to shoot for a June hearing. If you have any comments you want to send on that beforehand in the next few weeks, just send them my way. Um, I don't, we only have 10 minutes left, I don't know that we have a ton of time to dig into parking. Is there anything you'd like me to, um, provide for the next meeting though? Like, I know, um, for me, the big thing we were talking about again was like coming up with some kind of, um, fee in lieu of.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think
And then it will be up to the council to decide what that fee is. But, um, looking at, you know, because we have that option for in the central commercial, not having to provide parking, but, um, they're still using parking elsewhere and that's city parking lots and city streets, so that fee in lieu of makes sense.
Yeah, I think if you can provide examples of what that
Might look like?
Looks like, like how that, how that reads and other codes for fee in lieu of, and probably
Like again, we're not picking the amount, but seeing how it works, um, and then we can provide Yeah.
Example of a
Yeah, okay. So I'll try, I don't know, if, if any of you guys have ideas of jurisdictions that do this and you want to send them my way, that's great. I will do some digging myself and I'll work with Andy as well to see if she has any ideas.
Probably something, so if the cost of parking all published numbers.
Yeah.
The cost of the parking industries.
So we do have even change of use downtown where it's like, it's going from one like a retail to a restaurant that has a higher impact, um, it would, would have required more parking and so looking at that difference, difference. This is what was there, this is the difference, this is how we partner space since you would have to
I think we should be very soon.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's, then it's, it's across the board, like the, because the people that tourist commercial, general commercial do require parking, so they're taking, they're going to take away from their lot coverage to accommodate parking and so they can't build as big as they'd like to because of that. Um, and then the central commercial, obviously we don't want to have a ton of parking lots downtown, um, right? We want those residential that, or the residential Um, right, we want those residential that are the residential, those commercial businesses. Um, but they, yeah, they should pay their fair share as well as kind of the the vibe we've we've grown in, so. Um, I'll try to put something together there as well. Um. So we'll plan on a public hearing next month. And then do it, is there any, anyone who won't be here? That's in the room right now. That would be June, let's look at it. I don't have my. I don't have my.
June fourth.
June fourth. Does anybody have any conflicts? June fourth?
Nope.
Okay, so we'll shoot for that. All right. What?
Well, it's make it anyway. Free to make more instead of more.
All right. Yeah. Yeah.
I thought it was still cool.
Okay. Do you want to, do you want to close the?
Um, yes, we're closing the meeting at eight fifty-three. Uh.
I can find motion to.
Thank you, everyone.
If you did.
Thanks, Drew.